Jumping in, I'm practicing.
All right, this time, I'd like to call to order a regular meeting of Perry Carnegie Library Board. It's October 17th, 2022, 6:15 PM. Roll call, please.
Wines, here. Marshall, here. White. Coffee?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Bond?
Here.
Cold Iron?
Here.
Stroller?
Here.
I do declare a quorum. Tonight's invocation will be by Mayor Bill Stroller.
Will you join me in prayer, please? Dear me, Father, thank you for the opportunity to come before you and stand here and pray openly without the worries of persecution. We just thank you for allowing us to have this wonderful country that we're able to do this in. Thank you for all the participants on the council that stand for the city on this council and try to do the best we can, make decisions, have open minds, and make good decisions for the betterment of the city. We just ask that this evening that we stay focused and everything that we do and decisions we make will be to your betterment and glorify you. I pray this through your son's name. Amen.
All right, item one is the consent agenda.
I make my first line, please. Consent agenda is presented.
Second.
Motion second. Roll call, please.
Wines? Yes. Marshall?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Bond?
Yes.
Cold Iron?
Yes.
Stroller?
Don't suppose any of you are here for the library. Nope, all right. Item five, presentation of oral report of report on library usage and statistics on Perry Carnegie Library by Pam Riggs, head librarian.
Summer reading program was quite strong this year with 133 participants. We had a total of 32,500 minutes read by ages zero to 11 years. We had an impressive 6,480 minutes read by ages 12 to 18. The staff worked on hyperspeed to shift more than half of adult materials upstairs. Fiction and teen books which circulate heavily have more room for materials and displays. I finished the final report for the ARPA grant and the annual report. Both are required by the Oklahoma Department of Libraries. The street crew installed this toller charging station umbrella funded by the ARPA grant. Usage on the charging station is on the upswing. I met with the Small Libraries Network on September 9th in Pahaska. This is a group of library directors from our vicinity who meet to discuss library trends and programming ideas. We are having a free adult program tomorrow on Tuesday, October 18th, from 6:30 to 7:30. The program will be turning an old book into a picture frame. It's a great decoration display as well as a memory for your family. All you have to do is bring a couple of four by six photos for the craft. Look. We will provide refreshments and you can make a new friend. So I brought them to show them off. We don't usually have an audience. One of the employees made this with her kid's picture on it. So her kids may be protesting later. Teen book bags are back. Each bag contains a book selected for the teenager, candle goodies, snacks, stickers, and a bookmark. Each theme is unique. Teenagers can sign up through our website or in person. We had 13 teenagers last year and this October, we have five more. So it's on the upswing. The next teen book bag is December and teens can start signing up November 20th. Perry Carnegie Library Progress Club, not the library, Progress Club, purchased supplies to make buttons and is donating the proceeds of the sale to the Perry Elementary School Library. Buttons are $2. You can purchase at the Carnegie Library or at the elementary library. They're cute. Some are for kids. And then we have like Perry Maroons baseball. And this one just Perry Maroons. We even have shop local ones. And I bought some for the ladies because I know, I've seen you shop them local and I know you push and I know you push. Santa will be visiting the library on December 11th, or December 1st from 5:30 to 6:30, bringing children dressed to take a picture of Santa. Children are welcome, they wear pajamas if that makes it easier on parents. Kids will also make a craft and have a snack. So I think that we might be the first out Santa this year. First one. Do you guys have any questions?
Thanks Pam, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any new business? Not?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion second to adjourn. Roll call, please.
Anne Wines?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Bond?
Yes.
Cold Iron?
Yes.
Stroller?
I'd like to follow over the regular meeting of the Perry Municipal Authority, October 17th, 2022, at 6:20. Roll call, please.
Wines?
Yes.
Here. Williams?
A marshal, excuse me. I just jumped everybody.
White? Coffee?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Bond?
Here.
Cold Iron?
Here.
Stroller?
Here. Thank you. I do declare a quorum. Item number one is the consent agenda. There's one item.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Marshall?
Yes.
Wines?
Yes.
White? Coffee?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Bond?
Yes.
Cold Iron?
Yes.
Stroller?
I have four comments from those assembled pertaining to the items on the PMA.
Did I swear or talk or do I wait till I don't have an agenda?
It's not the PMA, you're not on the PMA. Thank you. Seeing none, hearing none. Item five, proclamation, combination reports inquired by the governing body. Item six, consider approval of amendment to termination agreement dated April 5th, 2021 with Utility Services Company Incorporated concerning work to be performed by, performed to take number two. Or you have any details on this?
This agreement was actually approved last year, but we didn't provide the, we didn't make payment under it because we weren't really prepared to drain the South 15th Street Tower because that pretty much keeps the system pressurized. Now with our new water project, water system project, and some of the improvements we're going to be doing to the tower, we can switch to the North 15th Street Tower once those additions and improvements have been made to that tower. And we can drain the South 15th Street Tower and we can paint the outside and paint the inside, which, which needs to be done because we've had a maintenance service agreement on this tower for many years. And pretty much what we're going to do here is, is finish up, do the work that needs to do, be done, and then terminate that maintenance agreement. Maintenance agreements on towers are like maintenance agreements on your auto appeals, you know? Is it smart? Is it not smart? You know, I mean, it certainly can be a whole lot of money and, and we're feeling that this would be a good time to terminate it after it gets done. There have been a few amendments made that I made this morning to the documents that you have provided. One, we're going to do an adhesion test to ensure that the paint will stick. Second, our engineer is going to help supervise this. That's Matthew Coe. And then when he tells us it's acceptable, we will, in fact, accept it. And then the other most important one said that if they didn't get the tower, if we didn't get it drained and they weren't able to do the work by the end of the year, the cost would go up. And so we've amended that provision and, and that will not happen. It'll be done in a manner in which we can get that 15th Street Tower done. So, so it'll be set at, at those dollars. So we are, we are recommending that you do this. You've actually entered into the original termination agreement, makes a few amendments, but all the amendments are to our benefit. So we do recommend that you approve this agreement.
Any discussion? We set the motion to approve? Any further discussion? Roll call?
Wines?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Bond?
Yes.
Cold Iron?
Yes.
Stroller?
Yes, thank you. Item six, any new business that needs to come before the authority this evening? Hearing none, motion to adjourn. Item seven? Roll call, please.
Wines?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Bond?
Yes.
Cold Iron?
Yes.
Stroller?
I'd like to follow over the regular meeting of the City Council, City of Perry, October 17th, 2022, at 6:26. Roll call, please.
Wines?
Here.
Marshall?
Here.
White? Coffee?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Bond?
Here.
Cold Iron?
Here.
Stroller?
Here. I do declare a quorum. Item number one is the consent agenda. There's two items for approval.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Wines?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Bond?
Yes.
Cold Iron?
Yes.
Stroller?
Item four, comments from those assembled pertaining to the items on the city agenda this evening. Yes, I guess.
Well, I'm not on the agenda.
So let me, let me clarify something real quick, okay? Did you notify her and ask and tell her that she was not going to be on the agenda?
I told her that we would have something on the agenda at the last meeting. Pardon?
I'm just trying to clarify something.
I did not call her. No, I did not. But I told her that we would have something on the agenda and we have something on the agenda.
Okay, so do I speak now or do I wait till then? Because there's a lot of people in my area that are concerned. It's not just me and I think that...
Okay. Hang on, just a second, okay? Give me just a second, okay? What is on the agenda? We're going to allow, I don't want to talk tonight because there's so many people here, but what is on the agenda does not, what he's talking about, there's a committee that's going to be hopefully formed to investigate what's going on in the neighborhood. So that's not really an agenda item to discuss that, but we're going to allow that this evening, okay? But everyone has to know that the Attorney General says that only the, only the items on the agenda can be talked about, okay? So if we violate that, then we're in violation of Open Meeting Act. So we don't ever push you off. We're just saying if it's not on the agenda, we're in violation of the Open Meeting Act, okay? This, the agenda is what we discuss, okay? It's not a forum for the public just to show up and then. And I'm not saying that we don't have a problem tonight, okay? I'm just telling you that that's not what the agenda is about, okay? And that's the reason sometimes you and I get sideways because we're in violation with the state of Oklahoma with the Open Meeting Act.
How many people heard him say I would be on the agenda this week? That was your last week?
But that's not, that's not, I understand that.
Okay.
And you're not, okay?
Okay, my question to the city council, why would I be?
He was asked to told you, he was asked to call you because we wanted the engineer here, okay? He was asked to call you and tell you that you were not on the agenda.
Can, what engineer are you going to get? Are you going to get the first three?
No, that's not, that's not, here we're going to get sideways again.
I'm just asking.
That's not open for, that's not open for your discussion.
Well, when do I get to talk?
Well, you can talk now, but we're not going to, we're not going to fight about what engineer we have. That's the city's right to pick what engineer we want.
I think it should be our right too as people that are paying drainage fee and your, your new Mike Coe, the one that's doing this $3 million water project, the one that came and said totally opposite with all of these. And the first one, I bet you that your city council members don't even have this one that was done in 2018 that was emailed to me from Larry Purnell that gives you options to do in the easements that he hasn't even done anything in the easements in 2019. My home flooded and I lost everything. It's not just me. Many people in our area.
I realize that, I'm just saying...
So how can you get engineer reports that tell you one thing and then you go to turn around and spend $18,000 on another engineering report to tell you the exact same thing that the first one did? You guys didn't like those options. Then you bring in the guy that sits at the stop sign for $703. He argued with me about which way the water ran. He comes in here and he says, if the area floods, I wouldn't have spent $5,000 with the trains in my front yard if my house doesn't flood. And why does my house flood so bad? Because it flattens right there and the water puddles. Why does it flood? Because my easement is totally washed away and that water comes from the easement. That's why my home, other homes might not. But if you want people's numbers, I have them. Janet Harper that owned the house behind me, 2015, 2017, 2019, those homes flooded. I talked to you in 2017, 2019. So there is problems. And then he wants to get together and prolong all of this again by getting people in the neighborhood that actually have seen if my house is flooded. I'll bet there's a whole bunch of people that can stand up and say, that house floods, the water puddles right there. So for you all to sit here and listen to this man say, we need to talk about people over there in that area, see if her house really floods, that's insulting. It's insulting for me for three and a half years to come up here and to tell you. And then to read off the FEMA webpage about insurance is also insulting because I've told you guys this. Do you want to know how much it's going to cost for insurance? Because I have an estimate. Here you go, you can look at it. It's $1,000 a year and $2,000 deductible for the inside of my stuff and $2,000 deductible for the dwelling. There's other people over here that's went to their insurance companies. We don't have standing water over there. All the water is produced by the housing. None of these engineering reports say anything about rezoning. They tell you how to fix it. I don't understand why you bring in an engineer now that wants to wait. I know it's great, you guys want to wait, but people that have lived over there as long as we have, it's all washed away now. We can't keep waiting. I cannot replace everything in my house again. It's been three and a half years. You know, we're due for good rain again.
You made a comment just now, I think, hang on, hang on, everybody give it a turn to talk. Let's not be shouting over top of people. Okay, let's talk about that because I think it's the, the large percentage of the people here are assuming that we've talked somewhere about rezoning.
He did. The engineer brought it up and he wants to talk to FEMA about it. And Brian Henry told me a year ago in October, because we can go back and look at all of these, these are all on YouTube.
Okay, but this never once come to the city council. None of us in this, on this council have ever spoke about rezoning your neighborhood, ever. I challenge you to find that in minutes.
No, you can go back and listen to him bring it up.
No, no, I said, I challenge you to find it with the city council.
No, you guys often don't put it in your minutes, just like...
Everything's in our minutes.
No, you didn't, you didn't put in the minutes about him saying how it would be cheaper to buy our homes over there than to fix it. That didn't make it in the minutes because I got the minutes. And it did not make it in there, but I can tell you where you said it in the meeting because I've been here at every meeting, Bill.
Okay, well, we, all the, all the, all the meetings are YouTube.
Okay, then go look and why didn't make your minutes?
You find on the minutes or on YouTube where we said, any member of this council said we were going to rezone that neighborhood.
I didn't say that. I said, what about him making the comment about cheaper than buying the homes? And it didn't make in the minutes what he said. I didn't say you, I said him. Why didn't it make it in the minutes that you guys have mentioned buying the homes and it being cheaper than fixing it? And you know what's been mentioned and he knows it's been mentioned about my home more than once, but it doesn't make it in the minutes. I've talked to both of you on the phone. But if you put a retention point in over there, then flood insurance would be required because they can flood. Anytime you have standing water, that's a water basin. And the reason I know this is because FEMA was out with my house in 2019. His name was Moses. He came and sat in my living room. I didn't qualify for FEMA. I have an insurance claim right here where they came to my house. I had them there anyway. Nothing is covered by water. Nothing. That's how I found out because of tornado touchdown. I really believe. So I had insurance guy coming out anyway to look at my roof. It just happened all to be happening. Only thing I tell you is stuff I know. I know for a fact, that's why nothing's covered by water.
Well, we just go by what Matthew Coe said. Matthew said that you can buy FEMA, or you can buy insurance.
Same thing I've been telling you for three and a half years, do FEMA. It's outrageous. And if they change that to a flood zone, it triples.
Well, we never said we were going to change anything.
No. You want me to talk to this engineer, then that's his idea.
We're assuming, everyone's here assuming that we're going to rezone.
You know what assume means? It means make an ass of you and me. Nobody should assume anything.
Okay, well, that's what, that's what everyone is, all these people are assuming that they've been told that we were going to rezone. We've never, ever discussed that.
Well, here it is in the paper. You want to read the quotes in the paper from the meeting?
Okay, well, first of all, they, those folks aren't accurate all the time, to you.
You thought this fight was just me and I was crazy. It's not just me. I just can't wait anymore. I just have the loudest mouth in the area. Every one of these people have seen me work my butt off at my home and to try to deter the water. You come to my house and say, oh, this is an easy fix. And on the farm, we just get a tractor and we just fix it. And I kept telling you, you can't just do that.
I've never said it.
My home, you...
I never said on the farm we get a tractor to fix it.
The easement, you did when you were talking about the easement. You looked on the easement, you said, I need a tractor. On the farm, we build a brand. That's exactly...
I never said that.
Okay, yes, you did. In your white truck, the day that I had my shingle shop. Yes, you did.
No, I didn't.
Okay, whatever. Okay, I'm not going to get into that.
I'm not going to say ever take a tractor in there and build anything.
You said on the farm, that's how we would do a flood. I didn't say you could do that at my house. I said, if you had the water on the farm, you would get a tractor and you would build a brand. I didn't say you would do that in my yard. I said, that's how you would stop a water. Now, this is what I'm saying. I didn't say you would come over there to do it. I said, you said that about out on the farm if you had a water problem. That's what I said. I'm not saying you said you could come and fix that. I said, that's what you would say, how you would fix it on the farm. I'm not putting words in your mouth. I'm saying what you told me. Okay? I'm not a liar. And you know that.
I never said you were a liar.
Okay. So listen what I say. Now, this is ridiculous. People have water problems over there. He can maintenance the easements and make the water run away. It's supposed to, so it's washing away houses. It says in the back of there, options to do, that the city can do. That's like an alley. It's supposed to be cleaned up. We can't touch it. Go on the second floor and read about it. We can't touch the easements. We're supposed to clean it and keep it clean. My lawn man knows it. I weeded it. I planted dirt and everything. I can't touch it. But my house keeps washing away. That's where it comes in the side door and in my front. And then it puddles right there because it's flat. There's no, there's no, nothing. It flattens out right there and it pawns. And then I have sandbags. What bit is sandbags when they're ripped all the time and it's just a pile of dirt? That's ridiculous. You think I like orange sandbags in front of my house 365 days a year? It looks like trash. I don't like my house to look trashy. I really don't. I try really hard to keep it nice. I don't like that. I don't even call. I just pick up the shredded things so my lawn man don't get it in his lawn or weed it and I just throw them away. Something needs to be done over there. A bunch of us are over there going, why are we second class citizens? Why does money go everywhere else and not over with us? Our homes are important to us. We spend a lot of money over there. Us on fixed incomes, we can barely afford our electric bills and our water bills right now and our gas bills are going up. There's no way we can afford flood insurance. That's insane to even want us to get that over here in the middle of Perry. It shouldn't even be an option. We need to find out who has the property down behind ours. Is it the railroad? Is it the city? Why isn't that clean? Why isn't it cleaned up? Why isn't the brush gone? We need to find out and whoever's in charge of that haven't cleaned it up back there. So when the water does get back there, it can keep flowing. Nobody does anything. Why isn't Locust Maintenance? That has the big tunnel, the big drains. So when the water does go to Locust, it can flow. There's so much more that can be done instead of everybody getting mad at me because I've been trying to get this fixed for years and years. I'm just at the point now, she's old, my body can't keep doing it and we're broke. We put everything in, 2019, 2021. I'm still paying stuff off that I had to take a loan out. My home insurance didn't even pay for all of my roof to get fixed. It's rough, but I'm making it and I'm paying my bills and I still have my home. I just need help. I need help. I need help. And then I come to you guys, I try to get on the agenda, I call him, I call you, I call you. You guys tell me, "Nope, can't be on the agenda. Nope, can't be on the agenda." How do I get on the agenda? And then I come in here and you argue and we fight. It's crazy because it's not about me and you. It's about saving my mom's home and other people on fixed income and other elders in our area whose home gets water and backyards flood. The people are trying to fix their helmet for their kids and their water. The water's flowing through it. I got a video on my phone for Terrence Vester. He wanted me to show you where water's flowing through his yard because he tried to make a nice shot for his kid. We're no different than anybody else. We just happen to live in an area that don't have drains.
And yet, we still pay for it.
Yep.
Don't make sense.
Okay, well, let's have some other folks speak to me. Someone else want to speak?
Stephen has something to say. Why don't you go say it?
Hold it up. Keep it holding. Just recently moved into the area. I don't know what the flooding situation is. All I do know is, yes, we do drive by her house quite a bit. And here just recently, there was a water leak. The water leak extended up to, let's see here, there's Locust, then it goes, I know the third one's Tower because we live on 103 South, or 103 East Tower. So the one that's in between Locust and Maple.
Maple.
Yeah. There's a water leak on Maple. It was in between, I'm still getting used to the area. The, it was towards the Head Start area. You guys just recently got it fixed, but it's been leaking for quite a while. Now, it, no, three leaks, okay. My apologies. All I knew was there was a substantial amount of water that was trickling down the road. The water, when we could, when we drive through it, I noticed that the water would run down Maple Street and it would come to the corner of Maple and the other street where her house is sitting. And it would divert. Part of the water would go down Maple, the rest of it would go down towards her driveway, basically.
Second Street.
Well, is it Second Street?
Second.
Second Street, sorry. This water shouldn't be doing that. It should just be traveling straight down Maple. We have a hill coming down Second Street that comes right down to the basin of East Maple, or not, East Tower. Then it comes down, kind of flattens out, goes to Maple, and then it goes out to Locust. This water comes in at this level. The drainage portion for the actual curb is sitting up on a hill. It's not sitting down where the basin is for that water to be traveling down through the actual middle of the road, the easement. It's sitting up on kind of a hill. Is there not a way of fixing that? I mean, there's water actually with that water leak pooling right there in front of her house. But yet, the drainage portion is beyond her house. I can see where the water's coming, where the water's sitting. And that was just a trickle. So yes, I can understand. I just recently moved in there, but we're paying rent. So if you guys do rezone, you guys do take anything like that, yeah, that's going to raise our rent. We're having a hard time making it as is too. I mean, our electric bill shot up quite a bit this year and we're having to take and struggle a little bit, but we're making it. We pay drainage. We've been paying drainage. We used to live down here on South Boundary. We paid drainage then. Where does that drainage money go? I mean, I know it went to go pay for the big machine that we had to clear out the drains, but where's that money going? Why can't that money be used to fix this drainage issue? Or can we not get the street redone to where it'll actually properly drain and have the water travel down Maple instead of backlogging over into a pooled area and running down the easement? I mean, there's other avenues. And I understand this has been an ongoing fight. I know it's been, I've heard on it, city council, I've kind of keep a track of everything. And it, I can understand where she's coming from. But there's other people, as you notice, that do have her ear and are Perry citizens. We need something done. And if that's up to you all to do, think of what you've got to do to get it taken care of and try to find a way to get it on the agenda. Try to find a way to focus your guys' intents on not just one contractor. If she's had numerous ones and you guys had numerous ones, come out there and take a look at it and tell you how to fix it, dig through the records. Find them. I know we have them. You can't tell me you don't. Just find a better option. I mean, we're already struggling as is trying to pay for what we've got. And times are tough right now. Inflation and everything else. So I'll rest my case on that.
I appreciate you coming. And again, I say that we've never discussed rezoning that neighborhood.
And I came because that's kind of what I've heard. And I mean, yeah, granted, I probably wouldn't have come if that was not the case, but there's also the intent of the aspect of the, yeah, we do have an issue in the area.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am? Can you come to the podium and please state your name and?
My name is Veraise. And we were one of the first houses built in that neighborhood. And I say "we" because there's three different homes on the first block of, the second block of Maple that have the original owners from when we were first built. I've seen all kinds of problems. And the drainage problem has always been there. Common sense will tell you that if you're on a hill, the water's going to go down. Where's it going to go from there? Has anybody thought about that? Then they're talking about building a pond or a dike or a.
A retention pond?
A retention pond, something like that. That means that you're going to have to redo the water lines, redo the sewer lines, redo the gas lines, natural gas, plus the electricity and things like that. You put that there. And forgive me for saying this because I've lived from coast to coast. My husband was military, so I've lived from coast to coast. I've been through a lot of stuff. And all I can simply say is anytime there's water, the children's going to want to go play and sooner or later, you're going to have a death in that. And that's a neighborhood with children, you know? Every other house has got children in it and you're going to have the problem. My house has been there 44 years and this is finally, we've finally got your attention? That we have a problem down there? How come it took so long?
We've been discussing this for years, ma'am.
Well, how come it took 44 years to get real serious about it? Pardon me.
Well, that's way before my time, so I can't, I apologize.
Mm-hmm. Well, that's the reason why I'm saying what I'm saying. Forty-four years. She said she's been working on it for three. Well, the rest of us have been there for a long time. We've been seeing it. We've dealt with all kinds of problems for 44 years. And some is only like, what was it, 23, 30, 18? Some people have been there eight years. Some people have only been there two years or six months. And I have a neighbor that's only been there about three months. So we all are, it's a hill. It's solid rock. And we had to bring in dirt so that we would, could plant trees and flowers and gardens and things like that. And where's all that dirt gone to? I've heard somebody in the neighborhood saying, "Oh, my backyard is all gone." It's washing. And the reason why is because it's all going downhill. I don't know. I'm like somebody else said, "It's like beating our head against the wall." We can't seem to get anything done, anything taken care of. The water lines break? Yes. You know how long it took? One of those, just one of those water lines that broke to get fixed? Nine months. That water just kept going down. It wasn't on our portion of it. It was on the city's. You think they care? We're still paying for that some way or the other because the city does pay it and we are all paying your wages that works for the city. But we can't seem to get anything taken care of. Another one, it took six months to fix. The last one only took three months. And that's water. Again, it goes downhill. So pardon my French. And then if you do rezone us, if it works out that you rezone us and put in that retention, whatever it is, pond or whatever, that's going to hurt us deeply. How many homes is it going to take? Do you care about us? Our homes? Do you care about your own home? Wonder if they want to do that?
If we did that, ma'am, there would be any homes taken out as far as I was understanding.
Well, it has to be. It has to be. And what did they?
We talked about if there's a retention pond, if my memory serves, it'd be way down closer to the road tracks is where the retention pond would go.
No, it was my house and the house behind me is what the engineer wanted to do.
And it will take at least 10 homes right there to get it all taken care of. And that doesn't count you having to redo the water lines, the sewer lines, the gas lines and the electric lines. So you're talking about a lot of money.
Well, that's exactly, you're exactly right. That's the reason that we're struggling right now because they want to clean that easement and all that stuff is in that easement. So we have, we have to have the gas company come in and move their lines. We have to move our water lines, sewer lines. Our electric poles are there. That's right down that easement where everybody's wanting this water to go.
But the engineer said that wouldn't work. He said that that one wasn't there and Larry Purnell wanted, that's the only one he wanted to work on. The engineer, the first time he comes, said that it wouldn't work and then the second report said it wouldn't work. You have to put in drains because it floods two different places. The water all runs north and south instead of east and west through it and that's why people's backyards are washing away because none of the water is running the way it's supposed to be running.
Go ahead.
No, that's all right. She was going ahead. She knows more about some of that than I do. All I can simply say is that, why don't we take some of the suggestions that they had that we could do and see if that works enough to where we don't have to put in a retention pond or whatever? That we don't have to do some of that major work? And so we can keep our homes and we won't, we have to buy some flood insurance? Because if you put in that retention deal, they will have to rezone the place as a flood zone. And that's going to hurt all of us. I'm on social security. This year alone, and this is October, I've already had four months where I couldn't buy food. Thank goodness I had ramen noodles and stuff in the freezer. So it's not good for some, for some of us. And I, we've had our house for 44 years. I want to keep it. I have a son that wants to go have it for his retirement. I've got great-grandkids. So there's ways of fixing it without having to be ridiculous and spend a whole lot of Forgive me. There used to be a guy here that, Walt Freeze, that used to run a Caterpillar. And he used to make all kinds of things. He could have told you what you could have done and done this and then, but he's not with us any longer. So I know there's some farmer out there, if my dad was still alive, he could tell us what to do. But there again, telling us what to do and telling you because it's city property is two different things. We're still knocking our head against the wall. Now, that's my two cents. Forty-four years it took you guys to wake up.
All right, thank you. Item five, proclamation and combination reports inquired by the governing body. Coming in with item six, city manager's report and monthly project update.
Recently, we had a customer appreciation day. Had a good turnout for that event. As always, as I mentioned before, it's always here for our staff to interface with those that we serve. Melissa from the Go-IT team was there to help explain the power cost adjustment. We appreciate her coming and helping out. Jardoe did an outstanding job hosting the event. She really gets, this is one of her favorite events. Tomorrow, there will be a parade of concrete trucks on fur going from east down to ditch which. There are probably about 50 trucks. So everybody needs to be aware of that and drive cautiously. We talked prior to the meeting, we'll see how the, how many trucks get by because of the trains lately, which have been very problematic. There should be a smaller pour on Thursday as well. Don't know how many trucks we're going to have, but Mueller on those days too. This should be from 7:00 AM to noon. Love's opens officially on the 20th. Over the weekend, they powered up their, their cross sign, which was nice to see. We're making progress in Perry. They also have a ribbon cutting sponsored by The Chamber. Must be November 9th at 10:30. This weekend, we have our fall citywide cleanup event from 8:00 AM to noon. City crews will be at the street barn at 301 South 8th Street to help unload items and we'll take them to our transfer station. And the Imperial Recycles this Saturday also from 10:00 AM to noon at the Armory. Council lady questions?
Thank you, Larry. Item seven, chief financial officer's report.
This one will actually start off with a piece of good news for you. Speaking of power adjustment, which we said is covered in the deal, our PCA for this month has finally backed down. Our bill was two cents lower than what it was last month. We'll be at about 2.45 cents per kilowatt hour. That is still up from what we were experiencing in May, which is between one and a quarter and one and a half, but it's a whole lot better than the 4.9 that we had last month. So a lot of that is actually driven based on consumption, you know? So again, demand cost coming out, coming to us from OMPA is lower. We don't have a high end of demand that we've been having during those hot summer months. So we will see, should see some significant increase or decrease in rates, some increase in customer satisfaction whenever they actually open their bills at the end of the month. CPI came out last week, 8.5% is what we're looking at. So another month, matter of fact, as I was projecting out and kind of telling you guys where I was afraid we were going to be for the year, we're still on track for that hitting almost 18% by the time we get on a two-year number by the time we get to December. So that's still another piece of concern, another thing we want to watch. We are extremely happy though with our sales tax collections. If you look at the sales tax piece and look at the, look at the dollars that we're bringing in, we had between sales tax and use tax for the month, it's going to go up to about $416,000. It's the first $400,000 number that I can ever remember getting a report for sales and use tax. A lot of that is driven based on construction in the area. So that number will not be a number that I think we will continue to have waiting on the rest of the confidential reports, like actually backing into what our real growth number is for the year. But it is, it is nice to have it in the months that we have it. It will give us a little extra spending money. Probably about $70,000 is what it's going to equate to as far as general fund over what we had budgeted for the first three months of the year. So you know, that extra $70,000 will help offset some of the other items that we're going to be talking about later on in the agenda. But it is a positive number for us and something that we haven't seen. If you look at the financials, should be the handouts that came, just a couple of quick things. Don't worry about the decrease in cash. We had the big check that we wrote this month for Fire Engine. Russell spent all that money. So the decrease in cash was due to Russell and nothing else. kidding, saying to the audience, I got a list harassing for spending so much. But no, we did get that check written. So that's really, that really offsets the majority of the cash decrease for the month, and you guys knew, we had grant money come in prior to cover that, so it's not like it's all lost money. It just looks really bad this month. I don't want you jumping up and down about why our cash went down half a million dollars this month. Looking at a handful of other things, we are setting in about 25% of budget. Mentioned last month, as far as governmental expenditures go, we have all of the, not all, we have a portion of the right-of-way acquisitions from the dam project. That's really why general government's over what it's expected to be over. I mentioned the fire truck is why fires over its piece, but everything else from an expenditure standpoint looks like we're really in line with what we would expect. On the P M A side, there's all of our expenses, all of our expenses are really where we would expect them. Yes, the wholesale cost of electric is up, but we've talked about that. Our revenues are up also as we pay for that extra cost of electricity. If you look at it, no, I probably didn't project it high enough for our excess electricity, but we're not making any net money on that, so it's not like it's a number that I'm really worried about. We live off of the margin, the difference between the wholesale cost and what is actually billed out to the customers. So that number we're setting good on. It's the wholesale cost of electricity was underestimated, but I don't think, I don't think anybody could have estimated that we were going to have those high fuel cost adjustments pass through to us this year. So anyway, we'll be okay on total collections and total profit for the year, whenever it gets there. It's just, it looks a little weird when you're looking at the budget, if you're gauging just based on percentages. That's all I have for tonight. Do you guys have any questions?
Thank you, Russ. Item eight, consider approval amendment to the termination agreement dated April 5th, 2021, with Utility Services Company Incorporated concerning certain work to be performed on Tank Number Two, the same thing we passed in the P M A logo. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wines?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Cold Iron?
Yes.
Stroll?
Yes, thank you. Item nine, consider items pertaining to the Perry Water System Project. A, consider approval of the public construction contract with Wind Construction as the lowest responsible bidder in the total amount of $3,215,488.90. $2,743,488.90 for water lines and $472,000 for generators. Conditional upon receipt of execution of contract, bonds, insurance, and approval by O W R B.
We had this on your agenda at the last meeting, but we didn't have the exact amounts of what this was going to be. I think we had not to exceed $3.8 million or something. So we wanted to get you the exact amounts, and so we're presenting it again to you so there can be a formal approval of this. This is, of course, conditional upon receiving the executed contracts, bonds and insurance, those have been sent to Wind Construction, and of course, approval by the O W R B. As everyone knows, that note did close, and you know, the funds are available for this project. So there's actually two motions that are required, and they're really set out under the recommendation, the first motion for this one, and then the second motion for the change order. The change order, of course, which you haven't read yet, that's really going to the control valves on the north and south tower, the installation of flap gates and overflow piping on the four elevated towers and clear wells, which is what's going to get the whole system working together again. So you may want to go to two or...
Let's just do the motion on the first one.
Think a motion on the first one.
Motion to approve item A?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Wines?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Cold Iron?
Yes.
Stroll?
Yes, thank you. Item B, consider approval of change order number one to Wind Construction in the amount of $96,150.41 for installation of control valves on the north and south 15th Street Towers, installation of flap gates and overflow piping on the four elevated towers and clear well. Conditional upon receipt of execution of contract, bonds, insurance, and approval by O W R B.
Motion to approve change order number one.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Wines?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Cold Iron?
Yes.
Stroll?
Yes, thank you. Award, item 10, award a bid of subsurface lease to the sole bidder, Fairway Energy LLC, and authorize the mayor to execute and accept their bid of $125 per acre for 167.4 mineral right lease. 3/16 royalty of the following description, a tract of real property located the southeast quarter of A Track in the southeast quarter of the northeast quarter, described as the following, beginning at the southeast corner of the south half of the northeast quarter and run hence north 250 feet, hence west 741 feet, hence north 300 feet, hence west 250 feet, and hence south 550 feet, and hence east 991 feet to be point of beginning, containing 167.405 acres, more or less, in Section 1 Township 20, township 20, north range, two west of Indian Ready, Noble County, State of Oklahoma.
In order to enter into these types of agreements, we have to buy statute. We have to advertise these. It's kind of silly because somebody comes to you, says, "We'd like to lease this," and then we have to advertise, and they're just the only one to bid on it because they're the ones looking at it, but that's what the statute says. So that's what we did. Of course, I structured the advertisement in accordance with what their offer was, and then they accepted it. Now, none of this is going to be on the surface. It's all subsurface. It's going to be way deep under the ground, but it is going to be on our property, and we do have the 18.75% royalty interest on this. So if they strike, we're going to do, we're going to do pretty well. They were the sole bidder, the only bidder, and it wasn't in accordance with our ads, so we're recommending that you authorize this, the mayor, to execute this oil and gas lease.
Is this the property out by the highway?
Yes.
So what happened, if we enter into this agreement, what happens if we sell that property? Or we want to develop that property?
When you say out by the highway?
Off of I-35?
This is south of the lake.
Yeah, this is south of the lake, I'm sorry.
Okay, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, no.
Make sure this, yeah.
No, no.
No, and it's all, yeah, it's all, no, it's not, even South commercial park, no.
Yes.
Yeah, all of it, all of the sites are going to be on adjoining property. That's not our property. It's just pipe is going to be, you know, like 5,000 feet under the ground.
I mean horizontal, right?
Horizontal, collecting oil and gas.
I'm trying to question that, where you award the bid of subsurface lease to Fairway Energy LLC.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Wines?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Cold Iron?
Yes.
Stroll?
Yes, thank you. Item 11, authorize payment of contractor's application for payment forward to Horseshoe Construction Incorporated for the performance on the citywide sanitary sewer phase five capital improvement project in the amount of $93,494.25. Have we had final inspection on this, Larry, and everything's signed off on?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Excited to have this done and finished.
This isn't the final?
Yeah, it's not the final payment, but the, we've got the retainage left and a little bit, but yes, Will Sheets has done it all, and Co has looked at quantities and has certified those, and Will Sheets, you know, was our inspector on the project, and did a, you know, did a great job.
Motion to approve payment?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Wines?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Cold Iron?
Yes.
Stroll?
Yes. Item 12, consider approval ordinance number 2022-21 of the City Council of City Perry amending Chapter 10 of the Perry Municipal Code 2022 by the repeal of Section 10-1003, which provides for the offense of a minor purchasing or possessing tobacco and further repealing the provision in Section 1-111(c), providing for the minimum penalty for the purchase and possession of tobacco products, providing for an effective date in declaring an emergency.
Sometimes the legislature does things that don't make sense, and maybe this one does make sense, but you know, I mean, the police would routinely police the school, you know, for tobacco. Tobacco is bad. We don't want minors to smoke tobacco, and we don't want them to possess tobacco and purchase tobacco, but, and so there was a fine for that, a minimal fine, and we had them in, you know, juveniles in court, and we would find them, and that's the way the superintendent, principals, and teachers would police that. Well, the legislature's decided that there will be no more prosecution of minors for tobacco in the municipal courts, and if there are to be any actions brought, then those will be brought in the district court, and the children will go to tobacco cessation classes. So that's what they got passed, and we have an ordinance that provides that it's an offense, and they're fined, so you're going to have to repeat it. And that's effective November 1st. You know, I'm doing this in a number of places, and the school doesn't seem to understand it, and the officers certainly don't understand it, but that is the law, so that's what we need to do.
Motion to approve ordinance 2022-21?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Wines?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Cold Iron?
Yes.
Stroll?
Yes.
Motion to declare emergency.
Second?
That was the second.
Okay, I'm sorry. Roll call, please.
Wines?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Cold Iron?
Yes.
Stroll?
Yes, thank you. Item 13, consider appointment of an ad hoc recommendation committee of the Perry City Council to meet with residents concerning the drainage issue at and near Second and Maple Street. Councilman Cold Iron and Coffee Williams requested this. I'm assuming that you guys are wanting to put together some kind of committee? Is that what you're thinking?
Yes.
Yeah, I just feel, we just kind of feel like there's, there needs to be some sort of closure, whether it's whatever it looks like, that we need to look further into that to figure out what kind of closure we can get to this problem. I mean, we feel like it's gone long enough that it needs, it needs, something needs to happen. I don't know, we don't know what it looks like, but to form this committee, well, hopefully we can come to a resolution or fix or nothing. I don't know what it looks like, but that's kind of the idea.
So are you three wanting to form the committee? Is that the idea? I would gladly be on it.
Yeah, I'll be on it as well.
And there's some information I don't think that's been formally shared with the residents as a whole, which I think that that's something that we should do. Because there's going to be, whatever we do is going to affect them, whether it be on the roads, or drainage, or whatever it may be. So we think that instead of just hearing from one, we need to get everybody together and move this forward.
We talked about the town hall in the past, and this was just something we thought we could put this ad hoc committee bill to form that and get the communication up. I'll be on the tier four.
Well, I'll make the motion that we form this committee, and Derek and Joe and Scott can run with this and see what we can get done.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Wines?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Cold Iron?
Yes.
Stroll?
Yes.
Do we have the names, addresses, maybe emails of the folks in the audience that will want to be communicated with about this? Has everyone signed the sign-in sheet? Just, you know, if you do, please sign in so that we have all that, because that's who we'll communicate with.
So you're asking them to put their address beside their sign-in?
Yeah, if you could put your address, you know, beside your sign-in and...
They got that on there?
Oh, they do? Great.
Great, that's great.
Thank you, guys.
I guess you and I have never signed in, right?
Item 14, consider approval of resolution number 2022-12 of the City Council of City Perry, Oklahoma, amending Chapter 22, or amending 2022 Capital Improvement Plan in the City of Perry, Oklahoma, by amending Section B, found on pages six and seven, entitled Public Safety, by adding a project under subsection B dot four dot A, entitled Fire Station Improvement, including Exhaust Removal System, and classifying such project with a designation of mandatory and providing for an estimated cost of $178,666.
This item, 14 and 15 are really together. 14 is to get more points. You know, we have in our capital improvement plan, a new fire station as a project, which, you know, comes at a cost of, you know, several, several million dollars. But we didn't have anything about remodeling the existing fire station. We believe that we have an opportunity to get up to $100,000 REIT grant for that under item 15. In order to get maximum points, we need to amend the C I P, identify this as a project, and mark it designated as mandatory. So we're looking for an approval. If you like 15, then please approve 14.
And this is so they're not breathing in the fumes.
It's that, plus it's fixed the roof, it's fixed windows, it's fixed doors, sheetrocks, you know, it's to, it's to take care of some of the issues. I think 15 says that Lambert Construction came in there and made recommendations of what could be done. We're going to have to bid it, I mean, to the extent that we get the grant, it's over $100,000, so we're going to have to bid that work, but we do have a professional estimate for purposes of applying for the REIT grant.
Several of us toured that a couple of years ago, if y'all remember right, and it was in really terrible shape.
I toured it about two months ago, and it's, I don't know if it's gotten worse, but it's pretty bad.
Well, if I may, Mayor, the folks that worked there understood the financial obstacles, perhaps, that we were getting through with hospital in getting that, so if it had been for that hospital concern, we would have addressed this a lot sooner, but they've been very patient with us, and thank you. Our folks are certainly not just workers here, but part of our community, and every time we meet, it's always a pleasure to work with the firefighters. Thank you, and EMS, so, thank you, Mayor.
Motion to approve resolution 2022-12?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Does this grant, does it, if we are approved of this grant, does it say like how long we would have to use this building as a firehouse?
No.
So a crazy donation comes in, and we're able to build a new firehouse, we're not locked in because of...
Nope.
Okay.
No.
Thanks.
Nope, not a problem.
That's a good question.
Done?
Good question.
That is a good question, Dan.
Thank you for your donation.
Thank you for your donation. How long firehouse do you have?
Any further discussion?
I'll see you.
Roll call.
Wines?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Cold Iron?
Yes.
Stroll?
Yes, thank you. Item 15, consider approval of resolution number 2022-13 authorize application of financial assistance from the Rural Economic Action Plan, the REIT grant as we know it, fund for the construction of certain improvements, including the roof, windows, doors, sheetrock, miscellaneous items, and including the exhaust removal system, providing for the local fund match of $78,666 from the general fund reserves.
Well, up there at the top, it says 178, down here it just says 78.
Well, up there at the top, it says one seventy-eight, down here it just says seventy-eight.
Well, the, the...
That's our local match.
That's the local match.
Seventy-eight plus on it, yes.
Sorry, no, it's all right.
It's okay.
That came to me about so...
Yeah, the REIT, the REIT grant would be for a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, I, I got it.
Motion to approve resolution 2022-13.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Wines?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Cold Iron?
Yes.
Stroll?
Item sixteen, consider approval of a payment of eighty-nine thousand, one hundred dollars to Foot by Foot Construction LLC for the construction of the work at Century Park. And, uh, am I right, Brian, saying I said Exchange Bank?
It's from Exchange Bank, they brought that check in on Thursday or Friday, so we do have...
So we're passing through?
And, uh, and I gave them a, a donation, which, you know, which we haven't done a lot of in the past, because they haven't asked, they didn't even know that I could do it. But, you know, they can, to the extent that Exchange Bank can deduct that, that's, you know, we're a chair of organization, and, uh, and they can deduct that from, from gross revenue for purposes of, uh, you know, deferring, deferring taxes, so we provided that to them too. But, you know, a big thank you to Exchange Bank, I guess we've got, I haven't seen, and we have the two pickleball courts, which...
Aren't they done?
Are they done?
That was the question, are they done?
Yeah, I, I, I haven't been there.
I've seen the...
Haven't been there lately.
I haven't been there, but I, I believe they've been done, because they told us to, to make the payment. Uh, let's not send the check out till somebody goes out and makes sure that the work is done.
So, so the work has been inspected and should be accepted.
Sorry, I haven't been there at the concept.
Yeah, I just haven't seen it.
It looked like it was done, but uh...
I'd be looking at it, I don't know what I'd look at on the pickleball court.
All right.
I make a motion to consider payment of, of, you know, dollar for the construction of the building for Century Park.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Wines?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Cold Iron?
Yes.
Stroll?
Yes, thank you. Seventeen, consider approval of agreement 293-8355 with the US Bank Equipment Finance as a leaser, and RK Black as equipment supplier for the lease purchase of certain printer equipment with the terms of sixty months and approximately seven thousand, eight hundred and sixty-two dollars and forty cents.
So this is for a cop, a new coffee machine, uh, to lease a new coffee machine? Is that what this is?
That accurate?
Yes. This is do tricks.
The one we have now is making noise, lots of noise.
It pops for like ten minutes before you can use it.
You hit the power button, and it goes...
And the problem is? So go ahead and warm it up? You gotta quit being so spontaneous.
It doesn't scan correct, you have to really watch when you're scanning too.
All right.
Is there maintenance included with the lease?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion to approve agreement 293-8355 with US Bank Equipment Finance.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Wines?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Cold Iron?
Yes.
Stroll?
Yes. Any new business, item, item eighteen, any new business needs to come before the council. Uh, I, I do wanna take a minute, and I apologize to the family for not mentioning this earlier, uh, but longtime councilman Conley Way lost his daughter this weekend. And we do need to express our condolences to the, to the Way family, him and Jenny. Jenny owns a business here in Conley, where's the Exchange Bank. Uh, his daughter Ally had been fighting cancer, I think, for seven or eight months, and they lost her this weekend. So, our thoughts and prayers are with Conley and his family. Okay, item nineteen, consider convening the executive session to confer on, one, to confer on a matter pertaining to economic development in the City of Perry to discuss proposal to entice the local or residential developers of the community to build single-family dwellings, duplexes, multifamily housing, and thereby approve the economic development of the city as disclosure of the proposal interfere with the development implementation of the proposal. It'd be the Woods Project pursuant to 25 OS set, OS 307 C 11 Oklahoma Statute of Amendment. Number two, confer on a matter pertaining to economic development in the City of Perry to discuss the proposal to remodel and extending the lease of the hospital. Thereby approve an economic development of the city. A public disclosure of the proposal will interfere with the development implementation of the proposal pursuant to 25 OS 307 C 11 Oklahoma Statutes.
Sound good.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Wines?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Cold Iron?
Yes.